It's past the six o'clock hour. I will call to order the regular meeting of the city of Crescent City for Monday, November 20th, 2017. Would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Follman?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Here.
Councilmember Greenow?
Here.
Mayor Enscore?
I am here. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Councilmember Greenow, would you please lead us?
Absolutely. We'll begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have anything to report out of closed session? Yes.
Yes, we did have action this evening. The council voted on a motion by Councilmember Short and seconded by Councilmember Follman to deny the claim of Christie Selby. That vote was four zero.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, we'll move into our public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include being placed on a future agenda. All comments should be directed towards the entire council. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order, will not be a part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the public record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. You will have an opportunity to comment additionally on any items that are on the agenda when they come up. Do we have any general public comment this evening? Please.
Could you tell us your name and whether you live in the city or county? My name is Henry Matt.
Okay.
This is a non-agend item. I recently had a hiccup in the billing with the city on the water, and I was just appalled at how they went about notifying me, and I want to know how we can either rewrite that policy to be more friendly instead of a crusty little note on the door. And because when I called the people at the billing desk, they kept referring to the policy's been in standing for a long time. Mike called me today, and he referred to it. And my wife went down and talked to somebody, and they kept referring back to the policy. And it kind of was just, we have an accountant in good standing for nine years, and it was just kind of that they told us it was going to shut off in 24 hours. It was a note hung on the door. It could have blown away in the wind. We could have went out of town, come back on a Saturday, had no water. I just want to know why we're not using an automated phone system, or an email system, or something to get us, you know, to get us into the dawn of technology. And, you know, my feelings were hurt today when I talked to Mike. I'm sorry that I kind of hauled at you, but that's, you know, another apology. But I'd just like to know why, you know, an accountant in good standing after nine years, you know, they just, bam, they were going to, you know, run me over. I know that the policy was there, but we need to maybe update that policy to reflect, okay, this person's been getting water for nine years. They've had a hiccup in their banking, you know, maybe we shouldn't be treating them so harshly. And I would just like to, you know, address the council is that the fact that I felt like my toes were stepped on when I talked to the city employees, then the city manager, and that's why I'm addressing you, is that maybe we need to rewrite this policy to incorporate more technology. I mean, my wife's, you know, finally got it down to where we should get all our notifications, you know, if there is any. But it was a long time in the making to that notice. They could have called us. I mean, the payment went out on the first, returned on the sixth, and then on the 16th, we got a crusty note on the door. That's 10 days that they could have placed one phone call.
All right.
And I'm just asking, or an email, you know, two minutes out of somebody's day. I don't know how many non-payments or whatever they have to deal with in a day, but it would have been nice to get at least some form before it got to the door.
Okay. Mr. Matt, I appreciate you coming. I think it was, it's always good to hear from our customers, and we don't want anybody to be unhappy or feel like they get their toes stepped on. And maybe sometimes when things like this happen, it does give us an opportunity to look at policies, and if things need to be adjusted, then we have an opportunity to take a look at that. So, we do thank you for being a good customer for nine years, and glad that we are going to get this worked out.
Yeah. I just wanted to bring it to your guys' attention, because I tried to bring it to the city manager and the employees, and they just kept, well, the policy's been there, you know.
Sure.
And they kept referring back to that. And if, you know, if I, you know, if I could, I would love to help, you know, look at the policy and rewrite it, because I've worked in the casino industry where I've helped write policies for casino, you know, policies and procedures. And so if, you know, if you want community input, I can do that.
Okay. Well, we appreciate it, and part of the responsibility of the city council is to adopt policy. And so we will lay in with staff and have them take a look at this, and when, if in fact we make a change in policy, it'll certainly be back to the public hearing, and maybe we'll have an opportunity to weigh in. But I appreciate your willingness to come and share your frustrations, and hopefully we'll get it all worked out.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other general public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll close our open public comment period, and we'll move into our regular agenda. And the first thing on our agenda, under reports and presentation, is a presentation by our Public Works Director, Eric Weir, on the recent Pebble Beach Improvement Project Initiation Document and our outreach efforts to our community. Good evening, Mr. Weir.
Good evening, Mayor Enscore, members of the council. So yes, what we are here to present tonight is an update on our Pebble Beach project. We have a consultant, we have Jeff Schwein, who is our consultant from Green Dot Transportation. So what he's doing right now is kind of drawing some attention in the background, is he's actually passing out a survey. So, part of this project, and part of where we're at tonight, is to let the council know what options we have available. A big part of getting this project funded is to going to be to receive as many comments as we can from everybody. So that's what we're trying to take advantage of this opportunity, to not only present the council, but present everybody in the audience tonight with a chance to comment. And so we have tried to make that as simple as possible, and so on the comment cards they'll have in front of them will be options A, B, and C, with kind of what they are, and then a chance for them to actually put written comments down. So that's what Jeff's doing. Tamara Layton with the, and Jeff, if you can, we can maybe give them to the city clerk, and so the council can also have the opportunity to see the comment cards and utilize them or express their opinion on other options that people can be thinking about. Also in the audience tonight is Tamara Layton, the Executive Director for the Local Transportation Commission, and I believe she might make some comments after the presentation. But this project has been a long time coming. Obviously Pebble Beach Drive, the portion that we're talking about on Pebble Beach is between Sixth Street and Preston Island. That's the portion that's most heavily used within the city limits. Obviously Pebble Beach goes a long way in the county as well, but this is just going to focus on the portion within the city limits. This project, the PID, which is the Project Initiation Documents, or another acronym that you'll hear used tonight, is PSR. Transportation in particular seems to love their acronyms, as with most engineering projects. But PSR stands for Project Study Report. And so basically what it is, is it's looking at all, they're trying to look at all of the components of a project at a macro level. So it's not necessarily designing it, but it's figuring out what concepts we want to do, and then putting an analysis together that looks at environmental concerns, it looks at constructibility concerns, looks at kind of the overall cost of a particular project, really turns into an in-depth master plan with an analysis towards what it's going to actually take to build this particular project. As we proceeded with this, we put together a fairly aggressive Facebook campaign to also try to get this project out there and to see what people thought about the project, get their opinion, really try to engage the community. Some of the comments that we received back was, why not Front Street? Why not A Street? Why Pebble Beach? Pebble Beach is in fairly good shape. Why are you concentrating on this particular street? Other comments address the fact that, well, Pebble Beach is just going to, you know, fall into the ocean anyway. Why are you putting so much effort into it? And, you know, with everything that we do as a city, it's important to take a look at the bigger picture. And this is a look at the bigger picture. It's important to come up with those plans, because you never know what funding source is going to come available that's going to be ideal for this. Now, in this particular case, we do have a funding source that we think would be ideal, which is one of the reasons that we targeted it. There comes another acronym, ATP, Active Transportation Program. The Active Transportation Program would be an ideal fit for this. As we started this project, I started looking at some of the concepts. This project actually started last year. We were hit with a significant winter last year. That winter then caused some of that bank erosion that people are worried about to actually get worse. And so with that came the opportunity, or the resources to address it. And that's where the city applied for some FEMA help, another acronym apparently, but the federal funding help. The FEMA folks actually came through. The city was successful in obtaining that funding. So that's going to fund the bank stabilization, which is about a $1.5 million project. They're going to fund 88.12% of that. The state will then pick up 75% of the remaining 12, leaving the city or the local agency only on the hook for a little bit less than 3%. So that project is in the works. We have been allocated, or we have been authorized, the, I don't know the exact right term to use, but they have, they have set aside the, or approved the funding for the city. They don't have the money yet in that particular program because of all the rest of the disasters that have happened. But the word that we received from Caltrans is we will be funded, it's just there's not any money in that pot right now. It could take up to about six months to a year to actually receive that funding. So that's in the works. In regard to why not Front Street, well, we have, we have applied for Front Street. We do have the master plan for Front Street. Council approved that years ago, and we've been, as the city staff, the Local Transportation Commission, Tamara Layton's been very engaged in trying to get that project funding, looking at all the different possibilities. We've picked off pieces over the years. The B Street sewer line portion, that was a sewer line that was in the Front Street project, because we didn't want to build the road without addressing the sewer. Well, now we've picked off that portion of it. Later in the council agenda, there's going to be another piece of Front Street that we're going to try to address, and that's by actually redoing the storm drain infrastructure. And we'll be able to rebuild Front Street between H Street and B Street. So it's portions of it, and it's really trying to optimize the funding that's available, and trying to fit the project that we have the greater need for as a community to the funding source. That's the challenge. So with the Pebble Beach project, this is a project that will be able to address the bank stabilization through the emergency funds from the federal government. We're hoping then to be able to pick off the pedestrian portion, the pedestrian improvements, through ATP, which is exactly what it's for. So all these things combined together with this now master plan, hopefully we'll be able to build it right. We'll be able to build it for the future. We'll be able to build it with a sense of context, because it is such an important stretch for our community. And we'll be able to build it so it functions exactly how we need it to function. So with that, unless there's any council questions, myself, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Schwein.
Great. Thanks for the introduction, Eric. Hi, my name is Jeff Schwein. My company's called Green Dot Transportation Solutions, and we do transportation planning work, such as this project right here. We're working on Pebble Beach Drive to develop this planning document that Eric mentioned. It's not an environmental document, it's not a design document, but what it does is it looks at the potential environmental constraints. It looks at the concept designs. We do significant community outreach to try to get feedback, to understand what the community wants. So as a consultant, we can come into a community and kind of acknowledge the things that we know that are going on, different trends in the industry, different design concepts at work, and we can bring that knowledge. What worked in other communities, similar size, but we don't know the, well, we do know quite a bit about the county and the city here, but for the most part, we rely on the community to really kind of give us some guidance on what they want to see. So when we're going into a project, we say, you know, this is your stretch of road. What do you do here? What do you want to see happen in the future? So how do I flick the? Start slide. I can't even see that. Oh, there we go. Perfect. Thanks. So, um, so just Eric went into some of the background. Oh, thank you. But this project actually has been identified for a long time in some of your regional planning documents. So the 2010 Regional Transportation Plan identified Pebble Beach Drive with a couple of different projects. Some of them relating to safety, to pavement condition, and certainly to sort of the erosion component. And then in 2015, the region developed an active transportation plan, and Pebble Beach Drive was recognized and was, had a lot of community comment on, hey, you know, Pebble Beach Drive is one of our main areas where we go to have leisure time, to eat lunch, and it's a big draw for current and potential visitors to the county and economic development opportunities. So there were some projects identified in the Active Transportation Plan. And then in 2016, the Regional Transportation Plan was updated, and again identified Pebble Beach Drive, and then now we're doing the Project Initiation Document. So what we looked at, we take an evaluation of traffic data, collision data, bicycle and pedestrian count data, and we try to determine what the existing conditions are. That really helps us sort of define what we can put on the road in the future and do the designs with. So some of these items on the screen are part of the things that we look at as planners. Some things that we're doing in this document are forecasting for future needs. So the population has a pretty slow growth, but it's becoming, it's getting higher to, it's rising. So we have some forecasts for projected population increases, and also for users. So part of the state of California, the federal government, local governments, I know this community in particular, Del Norte County, is really promoting a healthy lifestyle. We're trying to get people out of their cars and walking and biking and being a little bit more active. So certainly some of those forecasted projections for increased users are part of our study. So existing conditions, you guys know where it is. Eric already pointed out the project extends basically just past the Ninth Street intersection, and then down to, past the Sixth Street intersection. We actually did some design concepts that go down past Sixth Street and make the turn there. So this diagram here, it's a little hard to see, but basically the blue is a bike lane. There's a couple little segments of green on there that are existing sidewalks. And the rest, basically, there's no bicycle or pedestrian facilities, and there's a real lack of connectivity here, especially to areas beyond. So when you're a pedestrian, when you're a cyclist, you look for those connectivity pieces to say, hey, I can get from here to there without taking my wheelchair off a dirt ramp and into the gutter pan of a roadway, you know. So these are the things we look for. We evaluate the existing conditions. We did some survey work up here and identified any of the property boundaries that we would potentially be impacting if we were to modify the roadway section outside of the county or the city's boundary. So just some shots of the existing conditions. I do understand that this population includes prison population, and we're working on getting some numbers directly from the state comptroller's office to amend those. So current design practices, the Federal Highway Administration recently came out with a rural design guide. And this was kind of the first time that they've separated out rural and more urban type of design guidelines. This is really important for us in California, because we also have to comply with Caltrans's design standards. And so this helps us point to something that works in the context of our rural communities. So this first slide here basically is a widened shoulder. So pretty simple concept, but a lot of rural communities have a really abrupt edge drop-off. You actually do in a couple areas in town here and on Pebble Beach Drive. So this is just a widened shoulder. It's basically at the same grade as the pavement, and there's a buffer strip there. This one shown has rumble strips in there, which are the strips that let a driver know if they're fading off to the side of the road, it'll rumble. But they don't know, they don't have to have rumble strips. This can be effective to define the space for the user. The cars go here, the bicyclists go here, the pedestrians go here, and that's really what we're trying to do. Part of it is for safety, but part of it is also to make people more comfortable doing this sort of activity. This design is a bike lane and a separated sidewalk. So you can see the image in the upper right is Willow Creek. That was considered a successful project. They do have the bike lane there, and a separated sidewalk really protects the pedestrians. You can also add, in that lower left corner, is a buffered bike lane, which keeps the cyclists away from the motor vehicles by either a painted stripe buffer, or you could have physical barriers there as well. This is basically called a Class One bicycle path, and it's a separate path, so completely separate from the roadway. It's not touching it in any way. The vehicles can have their space, and the pedestrians and bikes can have their space. And there's a number of different varieties of this that you can implement. This is a protected bikeway. You can see in the upper right corner, the picture, that is a physical separation between the motor vehicles and the cyclists. This is the one that the kids want, and the moms want, and the dads want for their kids. It really lets people who aren't quite comfortable, say, take that next step and say, hey, you know what? I think I can ride along Pebble Beach Drive. I don't think I'm going to get hit. There's this protection here. So getting into some of the design concepts, so we took two design concepts, just based on what we know about the community, what we knew about the existing conditions on the roads and the future conditions that we expect. And we took option A and option B to a community meeting. So option A, I'm just going to describe it a little bit, has a five-foot sidewalk, a five-foot bike lane, and then directly next to that is the travel lane for vehicles. You'll notice at the crosswalks, so we did, we are recommending installing crosswalks at a number of the intersections. And you see that little blue thing leading up to the crosswalk. That is on each side of the intersection. That is a hard median barrier, and that is developed to slow traffic down. So these lane widths, I believe, are 11 feet. It's possible that they're 10 feet. I can't quite remember. But so they're going to feel a little bit narrower, so the driver feels constrained. You don't have to put up a speed limit sign that's lower than it is. We want people to go slower on Pebble Beach Drive. They don't need to get to their destination as fast as they think they do. So this little barrier that leads up to the crosswalks called a splitter, and basically it helps you feel more constrained, and so you slow down, especially approaching an intersection. So that is present in all three of the designs. So option A has a bike lane and sidewalk, pretty traditional, like you'd see, you've seen them all over the place. Option B kind of varies from that, and you have a multi-use path, which is a wider bicycle or pedestrian or wheelchair, whatever mode you're in, you can be on that. It's basically an ultra-wide sidewalk on one side, and we put it on the coast side, because we observe that that is where most people like to be. They want to be next to the ocean doing their walks or rides. So option B also has a sidewalk and a bike lane on the far side, or on the near side. And so that can accommodate folks who want to be on that side of the road. Maybe they're more of a destination traveler. I'm not just going on a leisure trip. I need to get to work. I'm going to be riding my bike. Here I go. I want the most efficient route. So then we took this to a community meeting, and then, and after the discussions, people were kind of asking for something a little bit more park-like, you know? We're on a leisure stroll. We want to improve this area so people come from all around to visit and want to walk on our path. This is our, this is our icon. So we developed option C that has a wide, multi-use path that meanders with some landscaping along the coastal area. Now, option B and C really tie in well to the emergency project fix, bank stabilization that Eric mentioned, because this little pullout here, the table and bench area, the resting area, the viewing area is, can tie into some of that work. So I want to show you just some of the configurations at the Ninth Street intersection and the pullout, the lookout there. Option A and B are fairly similar. They basically are getting folks through the intersection, around the corner. The alignment of the roadway is exactly the same. It just has the sidewalks and the bike lanes. And the parking area, the lookout, we just sort of defined some of the space and made it so people can't zoom in on a really low angle. It would be more of you're pulling into a driveway. So, this little barrier that leads up to the crosswalks called a splitter, and basically, it helps you feel more constrained, and so you slow down, especially approaching an intersection. So, that is present in all three of the designs. So, Option A has a bike lane and sidewalk, pretty traditional, like you'd see, you've seen them all over the place. Option B kind of varies from that, and you have a multi-use path, which is a wider bicycle or pedestrian or wheelchair, whatever mode you're in, you can be on that. It's basically a ultra-wide sidewalk on one side, and we put it on the coast side because we observe that that is where most people like to be. They want to be next to the ocean doing their walks or rides. So, Option B also has a sidewalk and a bike lane on the far side or on the near side, and so that can accommodate folks who want to be on that side of the road. Maybe they're more of a destination traveler. I'm not just going on a leisure trip. I need to get to work. I'm going to be riding my bike. Here I go. I want the most efficient route. So, then, we took this to a community meeting, and after the discussions, people were kind of asking for something a little bit more park-like, you know? We're on a leisure stroll. We want to improve this area so people come from all around to visit and want to walk on our path. This is our icon. So, we developed Option C that has a wide, multi-use path that meanders with some landscaping along the coastal area. Now, Option B and C really tie in well to the emergency project fix, bank stabilization that Eric mentioned, because this little pullout here, the table and bench area, the resting area, the viewing area is, can tie into some of that work. So, I want to show you just some of the configurations at the Ninth Street intersection and the pullout, the lookout there. Option A and B are fairly similar. They basically are getting folks through the intersection around the corner. The alignment of the roadway is exactly the same. It just has the sidewalks and the bike lanes. And the parking area at the lookout, we just sort of defined some of the space and made it so people can't zoom in on a really low angle. It would be more of you're pulling into a driveway, and then you could do the exit and come out like you're exiting a driveway rather than being able to speed. Currently, it's a really dangerous situation for pedestrians that are walking from one side to the other across that parking area. So, we, the design, all of the designs will help mitigate any safety concerns that could happen there. So, when we talked to the public, folks said, you know, we actually might want more parking down there. What about the RVs that might want to pull in and park? So, what we did in this Option C was we pretty much realigned the road, so you can see on the screen, the roadway is actually closer to the memorial there in the park, and it takes some of the park away, but it straightens out that curve there. And what it does is it allows for a little bit bigger parking area, and it softens the curve, which can help for vehicle safety as well. Some of the sight distance gets a lot better. Sight distance is basically, if you're coming down Ninth Street, you come up to the stop sign. It's a little bit hard to see a pedestrian or bike coming from either way. And so, also pulling out of the parking lot at the lookout, that curve is a little challenging to see somebody coming around the corner. So, Option C softens the curve, and it helps with the sight distance to be able to see bicycles or pedestrians coming around the corner from the north. Also, the multi-use path meanders all the way around and sticks to the bank, and then it puts pedestrians and bikers and any wheelchair riders across onto the east side of the roadway. So, those are the three options. For the folks in the audience, I handed out those comment cards, and we're really looking for feedback. We're looking for people to say, I like this one. And you can either say because, or just say, I like it, and that's the one I want. If you have a combo of more than one option, that could be entertained too. If you say, hey, I like the intersection at Sixth Street on Option C, but I really like Option B better as far as the overall length, that, we could take that into consideration too. But these are sort of the concept designs that we've come up with, and I'll talk a little bit about where they go from here. So, basically, right now, we're seeking input on these options. We want to have a clearly defined option to put forward in a package when we go request funding. The document we're developing right now is, basically, we're developing it to fit the specific grant program of the Active Transportation Program. So, the reason we're doing this is to help mitigate the costs of developing a grant application in the future. So, we're developing the project initiation document, which is required in order to receive funding. You can't get your money unless you have one of these documents. What we're doing is we're structuring the document so the city can just pull sections of the document out and insert them directly into the Active Transportation Program grant application. So, the option selection is really important. We want to be able to show the grant reviewers that the community was, you know, chanting, this is our project, we want Option C, very loudly. So, we're hoping for a clear winner. So far, it's Option C and B are the preferred options, based on some of the feedback we've been getting. So, one of the main places that we are receiving feedback is through the city's Facebook page. We also have a project Facebook page, and we set up a, through the Del Norte Local Transportation Commission, has a community feedback tool for transportation projects. It's called Common Place, and so we set up an option selection and comment tool on this platform, and people are going on there, looking at the options, selecting the one they want, and then typing in their comments. So, to reiterate, the Active Transportation Program, this program was a pretty robust program funded through the Federal Highway Bill and then adopted in a certain form in California as the Active Transportation Program. It's a competitive program, and the rural agencies have been having a hard time competing. You know, we get a project here and there. The city got one project for Sunset Circle, but it's pretty challenging. So, we, Tamara, myself, other rural advocates have been fighting to change the guidelines to make it a little bit more friendly to rural agencies, and that's happened in this latest cycle. The other thing that changed about the program is an extra $100 million a year in funding through Senate Bill 1. So, Senate Bill 1 was the gas tax that was approved by the legislature in the spring, and as well as funding a lot of local roadway maintenance projects, it does have an Active Transportation component to it, and that is providing an influx of money into the Active Transportation Program. So, the guidelines got more friendly to rural agencies, and there's a lot more money in it. So, the city is pretty excited and confident that if we show this project right and show that we've done the due diligence in concept design and that the community is really supportive, hopefully, they can get the funding for it. So, that's the presentation. I'm certainly here to answer questions, and I know Eric can step up too if the question pertains to him.
Counsel, you have any input or questions for Jeff?
What public events did you guys take the survey at?
Well, we had a public meeting, and so we invited people to come to a public meeting and show, we showed Option A and B at that community meeting, and it was quite well-attended.
This is the first I've seen this.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Okay. So, was it well-attended?
Yeah, yeah, we had at least, I think, about 28 people there. I thought that was well-attended.
Yep.
Small area.
Very good. Good, good public input.
And we're hoping to use this Common Place platform, and now that you guys know about it, please talk to your constituents and your friends and say, hey, there's this project. Show us which one, which option you like, and if you've got any comments, you know, now's the time. We're taking comments probably up until the grant application's developed, so we don't need to decide on the concept until January.
Okay.
So, there's still time.
Where can we get more of these? Maybe we could leave some at the library or something?
Yeah, we'll have some at the library and at City Hall, and certainly, people can go online, but I know not everybody's online, so they can be available there. If you need some extras, we can.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it.
On this card, sorry.
Go ahead.
On this card, it says, under Option A, it also approves safety for bicycles and pedestrians at a tricky intersection of TH and Ninth. Is it Sixth and Ninth?
Six, Mrs. [inaudible].
Yeah, that's Sixth and Ninth. That's a typo. We can fix that before we get counsel involved.
I would suggest, Counsel, as well as members of the public, to take a look at the survey and the opportunity to weigh in online via Facebook, through our, through the Transportation Commission, through our city's website. It's a great opportunity to consolidate data and get as much input as possible. My one input in looking at all of these, the one thing I think, number one, I have no problem with moving the roadway and taking a portion of the park and providing a safer parking area. The one thing I think is crucial is that we definitely have defined entrance and exits there. I know in C, it shows just that median area to provide that opportunity for big RVs to have those pull-through spaces. I just, that's one of my biggest concerns there, is that big, open space for pedestrians. People are still going, even if you have that meandering path, there's still going to be people who walk along the curve over where the roadway would be. And I think that having defined entrance and exit, access and egress there as it is in the other would be crucial from my point of view. It would be a longer median, in a sense, if the roadway is adjusted, but I think that from a safety standpoint, that would be really important.
Yeah, we can certainly accommodate that and kind of soften the curve on the entrance for, if an RV was.
The other question I had is on C, was there a reason that you didn't go ahead and continue with the bike lanes on Ninth as it was in the other two options?
On the east side of the road?
Well, when it turned on the Ninth, on A and B, there was bike lanes there, and on C, they weren't there.
So, going up Ninth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Coming back east on Ninth.
Yeah, no, they'll connect on the final design. This was kind of a draft.
Because C was just added in.
It was added in later in the design, yeah.
Well, I appreciate all the efforts and the public outreach, and again, I can't stress enough to the public that you need to get online and weigh in on this, because that's the best opportunity for you to take a look at all these things. The documents are there, so.
Yeah, and one thing to add to that is that, is that this isn't the final design. So, certainly, we're putting together some cost estimates. These are planning-level cost estimates, not engineers' estimates. So, we'll go seek the funding. When we get the funding, we'll certainly be asking for, you know, the right amount higher than we need to, or have some contingency in there. And then, when we get the money, that's when the hard design would go forward. There'd be more community outreach to really refine the design, to get it exactly right. So, this isn't going to go out tomorrow and be built like this. It will be massaged. This is really a concept picture.
Great. All right. Does anybody else have any questions for Jeff right now? Okay. Mr. Ware, Jeff, anything else you want to add?
My only concern was the fact that there really weren't very many people at your meeting, and I'd never heard about this. That's my only concern.
Okay.
Understood. Is there, is there something that you could recommend that we do now?
Did you print it in the newspaper at all?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was in the newspaper.
We were all, we all got emails. We go, yeah. Counsel was, should have been, should have been aware of the meeting.
Don't remember reading it.
Okay.
I'm not the only one.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Tamara, do you want to come and address this, since you are all things transportation?
I just typed a few notes here. So, the Transportation Commission has included the Pebble Beach Drive as a priority pedestrian and bicycle route, and I think that this project has a good potential to be funded with Active Transportation Program funds. We have applied twice for Front Street for ATP funding, and it's a, I think Front Street will remain among our highest priority projects for our region, but it is not really a good fit for the Active Transportation Program. So, we find ourselves in a position where you have to take a look at your priority projects, the funding available, and find what fits. So, I would prefer to fund a project at Front Street, given its priority for the city of Crescent City, but given the choices that we have, I think this is a spectacular opportunity for the city to move forward with an important pedestrian and bike path. The SB 1 has augmented the Active Transportation Program funds, but I think it's important as elected officials to understand that SB 1 still is 80% a Fix-It-First program, and the Active Transportation Program funds is actually a very small part of that program. It's a very small part of discretionary funding that resulted from the passage of SB 1. So, just sort of keeping in mind, while it's important to us, the rural counties are gaining some good ground in the program better benefiting rural communities like the city of Crescent City. So, that's a lot of hard advocacy work through Rural Counties Task Force and as independent regional transportation planning agencies across the state. So, we're gaining some ground on that, and that's pretty encouraging. We're going to have separate applications for smaller projects. This would certainly be a smaller project. It's not going to be a $10 million project. It would be included in those smaller project areas. So, I think that we have a much better chance of getting this project funded because it's a good fit and because the California Transportation Commission is finally hearing us that we need to have a funding application that is more conducive to rural communities and is not so urban-focused. So, I think that it's a good project. It's a good fit. It meets many of the goals in our regional transportation plan, and I encourage the city to continue to do outreach and to get as much public engagement as possible. That helps with the funding application. We really did have a good turnout in our first meeting, a lot of good conversation from folks who are in that community and really do a lot of walking and biking in that area. And as a resident of the city of Crescent City, I walk that path regularly, you know, often daily, not so much in the winter daily, because it's actually those two spots, that spot at Sixth and Pebble Beach Drive, and that spot at Ninth Street, both of them on the beach side and Pebble Beach Drive, are concerning, and oftentimes, I will, I find myself crossing the road, and so I'm walking on the east side, the non-beach side, which is not my preferred walking path. I want to walk on the beach. It's one of the reasons why I like to walk there, but it's so scary that I find myself crossing, walking for a while, then crossing back to the beach side just to find a workaround for those areas that are really scary. And so, I am, as a resident of the city in Crescent City, I really like Option C. I like the park feel and that it would make that area a little bit of a special area. I like that it would highlight the resources that the city already has at Brother Jonathan Park. There's a great playground there. You guys have just fixed the fence for that. Thank you very much. The restrooms are already in, so I think that it would really be a good way to augment the resources that the city already has with, you know, your current infrastructure. So, I, as a resident, really like Option C. As the Transportation Commission Executive Director, whatever option you move forward with, I think the project has a good chance to receive Active Transportation Program funding.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it, Tamara.
Thank you.
Good input. Okay. Any other public comment?
How you doing? My name's Paul. Senator, I live in the county. I utilize that area a lot. We come out there, and I bring a lot of friends who come and visit. We go to the Brother Jonathan Park lookout, and I meet a lot of people up there, tourists especially, they go up there for whale watching. So, there's a lot of tourists who utilize the area, meet a lot of bicyclists coming who are just biking around the county, and I do it myself. I've been to a lot of cities, particularly Canada is fantastic. Vancouver, Canada, they have incredible, incredible bike lanes. I mean, the city is just geared for biking instead of driving around. They want you on bikes. One of the things they did up there was to make sure bikes go in one direction instead of heading to each other on the same path. So, that's a possible option. The other thing too, I wanted to address too, is that stairwell at Sixth Street. Now, I use the one at Fifth Street because there's parking there, but at Sixth Street, it's not on the map that there was any crosswalk or any parking in there, but right at the last turn, as it begins to houses again to the south, there's that stairwell in there, if you all know what I'm talking about. Now, that doesn't have any parking whatsoever, and if I go use it with my kids, I park on the side street, which is perfectly fine, but there definitely needs to be a crosswalk there if we're going to do that. That's something that needs to be added. It wasn't on the chart at all, or even some side street parking with parking spaces would be great there. That's something that should be added. And then some lighting too, of course, and make it solar lighting if it's possible.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Other public comment? Okay. Seeing another close public comment. Mr. Ware, do you have? Okay. Seeing none on closed public comment, Mr. Weir, do you have anything else that you want to add? At some point in time, we may want to, staff may want to work with Green Dot, and as we've come to hit a point in time where we think we've got as much outreach as we can get electronically, to consider coming back and having another public outreach meeting and consolidate and say, well, this is what you told us, and so here's where we are. Is that really where we are? And so maybe give that a period of time where we can look at that, and I don't know when that may be. Maybe after the first of the year would be a good time, so. Okay. Mr. Young, did you have anything that you wanted to add? No? All right, we will move on then with our agenda. Thank you. Appreciate it. We have some items on our consent calendar, regular council meeting minutes from November 6th, the warrant claims list for October 28th through November 10th, the payroll report for November 11th through November 17th, and then the budget to actual for October 2017. Do I have any public comment on our consent calendar? Seeing none on closed public comment, bring it back to the council for action.
Move to approve consent.
I have a motion to approve the consent. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Mayor Ensor?
Yes, thank you. We do not have any ceremonial items tonight. We do have some public hearings. The first is a utility pass-through ordinance. We're going to hold a public hearing and read by title only ordinance number 800. We have looked at this previously. Mr. Young, you want to address it again?
Okay, very briefly. Of course, this was addressed at the last council meeting. It was brought up by residents of the Pacific Terrace Manor Mobile Home Park, wherein they were being charged for water and sewer in addition to their rent. And there had been a change there in the manner in which they were being charged, such that their charges for those utilities was increased significantly to the point that we felt they, they felt that the management was making a profit on it unnecessarily and inappropriately. And prior to December of 16, they had charged only what the provided share. After that time, they changed it in a way in which they were charging a much larger amount. They, the residents, that is, of the Mobile Home Park approached the city asking that the city adopt a ordinance prohibiting a pass-through or allowing a pass-through but not prohibiting making a profit off of the sale of the water and sewer services that the city provides. And we had this discussed at the last meeting, actually back in September. The council agreed basically with the concept. At the last meeting, the ordinance was introduced with some discussion from members of the residents, none of which I see here this evening, although I saw one of them just today, and reminded him that the matter was due to be heard tonight. Pleased he's not here, but nonetheless, it doesn't change anything. The staff recommendation is the ordinance be adopted as been presented, which would allow for the pass-through of only the actual cost of the water and sewer as the city charges the landlord or the owner of a property to tenants. It also permits the tenants to file their own legal action, some small claims if need be, if there's a violation of it. Under the present arrangement, if they had attempted to do so, they ran the risk of losing it and then having to bear attorney fees also. In the small claims action, of course, there would be no attorney fees involved. I don't know if there's any questions. We've discussed this several times before. That's sort of a recap of the ordinance, of the proposed ordinance.
All right. Very good. Counsel, any questions? All right, we have any public comment on ordinance 800? All right, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for recommendations.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 800, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Crescent City, adopting, amending Title 13 Public Services of the Crescent City Municipal Code by adding Chapter 13.50.
All right, I have a motion.
Pass-through, sorry. Pass-through of water and sewer charges to residential tenants.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Ensor?
Yes, very good. We will move on then to the next item, which is our 2017 Community Block Development Grant. Ms. Lever, you're going to address this? All right.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. This is actually sort of the culmination of quite a few meetings where we have discussed this application. So what we're asking for tonight is to hold a public hearing to approve the application that has been developed. As you know, we've been working on this for about six or eight months now. We've had, I think, four public meetings to get community input on what projects we should be applying for. What's in the application is what was approved the last time we were before you. We are looking at a storm drain project, $4,093,023, funding for the public services, the North Coast Rape Crisis Team for $221,134, Public Services Code Enforcement for $243,982, a planning and technical assistance grant to develop an economic development plan, $93,023, and then the general admin, that is $348,837, and that one is just a percentage that they provide to us. The total is for the maximum possible funding of $5 million. As we have mentioned before, and as Lori Adams had discussed with you in her presentation, a lot of things are changing about the application process this year. It is expected to be extremely competitive. I actually talked to Lori Adams today, and just for some comparison, last year, there was about, there was approximately $27 million, excuse me, $29 million available, and 25 applications were awarded. This year, there's $27 million available, and they anticipate somewhere between six and 15 jurisdictions will be awarded. So it is very competitive this year. But Lori Adams and city staff have been working really hard to put together the best application that we can. We have a lot of good supporting documentation to prove that these projects are very much needed for this community. So we're just asking for a public hearing to get any final public input and then to adopt the resolution, which approves the application and authorizes us to submit it on behalf of the city, and if the grant is awarded, to then sign the grant application and any other documents that are needed. So Mr. Taylor is here, if you have any questions about code enforcement or the economic development plan. And Mr. Weir is here, if you have any questions about the storm drain project.
Okay. All right, well, we will open up this public hearing then on the 2017 CBDG grant, and we'll allow the council to weigh in if you have any specific questions for staff at this time. We're good? We're good with the recommendations that we indicated previously? All right. Anything else from any other staff that you want to weigh in before we? Seen anything?
Yeah, I might comment. Some ways, as Linda said, it's almost, other than needing the public hearing, it's almost an item for, could have been consent calendar, but we do have to have the public hearing. I think one of the reasons you may not get a lot of public input is we've had, as you well know, input in some of the previous meetings and presentations of programs that were worthy programs, very worthy programs, but unfortunately, not everything could be funded, and so many of those have been heard before. It's unfortunate that the process goes quite the way it does, because in many ways, we've had the public hearing and received that public input.
Okay, well, we will take public input. Do we have any public comment on the CBDG application that we are looking at approving tonight? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and close the public hearing. Counsel, have anything else? Not, then I'll take a motion to approve and adopt the resolution.
I move we adopt Resolution Number 2017-41, a resolution approving the 2017 CBDG application for funding, authorize submittal, authorize signature, allocate program income funds, allocate funds for required cash match, and authorize the execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto from the general allocation of the state CBDG program upon approval.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Ensor?
Yes. All right, very good. We will continue then with our agenda. Let me pull back where we are, and we are going to adjourn to the housing authority, I believe. Are we not? All right. And let the minutes reflect that Board Member Kime is not here, and we'll go ahead and call to order our housing authority. We have some items on consent. The housing authority meeting minutes from September 18th, the warrant claims list, September 9th through November 10th, the 2018 payment standards for the Housing Choice Voucher Program, the 2018 utility allowances, and the CMAP scoring. Do we have any questions from the council on any of these items?
I do.
All right, which item?
Item 10.
All right. Well, let's, before we jump into it, Ms. Miller will take number 10. Anything else, counsel? Okay, then why don't we, why don't we go ahead and approve the other items, and then we will pull item number 10?
Move we approve eight, nine, and 11.
All right, I have a motion to approve eight, nine, 11. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a second. Would you please pull that vote?
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Chairman Ensor?
Yes, all right. So we're going to look at item number 10, which is the payment standards for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Counsel, Board Member Follman, what is your question regarding this?
Megan, you wrote, "Our voucher success rate dropped 3% this year," which you attributed to contract rent restrictions with landlords. And it's a pretty elementary question. What are contract rent restrictions, and how did those change this year to result in that 3% drop?
So the way that it works, the way that we have to restrict the rents for each family in order to make it so that the family can only contribute between 30 and 40% of their income toward the rent. So historically, we have set the percentage for our payment standards at the lower end. We can go anywhere between 90 and 110%. And we've set it at the lower, the 90%, because that allows us to help as many families as possible. But we're starting to fall behind, where we can't convince the landlords to keep lowering their rents to where it's just not financially feasible for them. So we're thinking that the strategy with the utility allowances going down a little bit, this is a good time for us to bring the payment standards up and hope that we can bring that success rate back up.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, great. Thank you. All right, so then, do I have a motion then to approve consent item number 10 for the housing authority?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Would you please pull the vote?
Board Member Short?
Yes.
Board Member Grino?
Yes.
Board Member Follman?
Yes.
Chairman Ensor?
Yes. I will, just before we adjourn from the housing authority, I just want to, again, commend our Housing Director, Megan Miller, and her staff. As the council saw in their packet, our CMAP scoring, which is the Section 8 Management Assessment Program, we scored at 100%, which makes us a high-performing housing authority. Not all housing authorities are high-performing. Matter of fact, there's specific training that is given out by HUD, because many housing authorities are considered troubled authorities or near troubled authorities. Not only are we high-performing, which means that we're over 90%, our score was 100%. That's on 14 separate indicators, and if you look at the 14 indicators and what you have to do to get 100%, then you would understand just how phenomenal our housing authority is. Again, $3 million worth of assistance comes into this community every year that's managed by our housing authority to make sure that people in our community have access to affordable housing. That's significant, and it's something that needs to be reminded of in our community of the work that our city staff does on behalf of the low-income people in our community. So Megan, you and your staff, please share our appreciation to all your fine work. We very much appreciate it, and so does our community.
It's not just the first time.
No, it is not the first time that we have been a high-performing. No, we are very good at being high-performing when it comes to this. All right, we will adjourn from the housing authority. We do not need to go to the successor agency because we do not have any items. We'll return to the city council. And under new business, we have some fire department grants, and I see that Chief Wakefield is here. He can come and talk to us about those. Good evening, chief.
Good evening. How's everybody?
All right, thank you.
Well, you know, I kind of here with good news, so I.
We like that. We like good news.
It'd be nice to explain that a little bit, what we've done. We've actually secured three different grants. The first one I'll talk about is a California Volunteer Fire Assistance Grant that is managed through Cal Fire, and we receive $19,000 and some change that will be a 50% match on buying structural turnout gear. And I may have said this to you before, but now there's a 10-year limit on using structural gear once it's been from the data manufacturer. After 10 years, it's got to go away, so we have to replace it on a pretty regular basis, and we plan to do a kind of a two-year replacement to kind of get a lot of it up to snuff this year and next year. And now with this grant, we kind of might be able to do it all this year, or at least a good chunk of it. So that part of it, kind of, we're asking for a budget adjustment to put the income into the budgets and increase our expenditures so that we can buy that. We have the match, because we'd already planned for that, to use to buy turnouts. We're just going to get to buy twice as many. And just so you know, a set of turnout gear, which includes a helmet and a hood and jacket and pants and boots and gloves, is pretty close to a $3,000 bill per firefighter. So it's a significant expense, and everybody's got to have a set, and they all got to be appropriate. So that's the first one. The second two were accomplished through the efforts of Eric Taylor, who wrote the grants to USDA. They're a 55-45 match with the city's percentage being a 45. And we're buying with one of them a new set of, in real terms of jaws of life, extrication tools, the ones that the city owned, Don Olson bought. And I've been chief for almost 23 years, so it was sometime before that. It was a long time ago. Anyway, and of course, the metals that they build cars out of and stuff have changed a lot, gotten a lot stronger. So we're upgrading and getting a new set, and that set is actually going to go on the new engine, which just FYI, our year grace period is ending Thursday. So you'll see that engine a lot more now, the one that we purchased through the rancheria. And the final one is we're replacing one of the vehicles that we have in the fleet. We're basically buying a brand-new. We're basically buying a brand-new four-by-four F-250 pickup for 45% of $27,000 roughly. So it's 13, 12, 13, pretty good buy for a new truck.
Yeah.
Something safer, and that's the pickups that we use for a lot of medical aids and hauling stuff and day-to-day work. Anyway.
Good.
That's what we're up to.
All right. Council, any questions? Chief Wakefield? It's good news.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Chief. All right, we have any public comment? See no public comment then, I'll bring it back to the council for action on Resolution 2017-42.
I move we adopt Resolution Number 2017-42, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, amending the fiscal year 2017-18 budget of the City of Crescent City.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and I have a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Mayor Ensor?
Yes. Very good. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it.
Pretty tough to say no to.
All right.
What an awesome opportunity.
Speaking of things that it's tough to say no to, Chief Mensel, see you're here tonight to talk to us about another wonderful opportunity. Good evening, sir.
Good news, Mayor, fellow council members. I'm here to ask the council to approve and accept the expenditure in the staff report from the Tamaki Foundation on the grant and to adopt the Resolution 2017-43. The Tamaki Foundation has been supporting the city since 2004. They have purchased five Canines, and this will be the fourth vehicle that they've assisted the city in purchasing. During a recent visit to Seattle, where the Tamaki Foundation is located, we visited with them over dinner and discussed the shortfall of one of our vehicles that it had worn, which was one that they purchased back in 2006. Probably the greatest asset there and the greatest salesperson we had there was our two Canines, Kai and Django. So I'm asking the council to consider and approve this staff report, the acceptance of the money, the funding for both the new vehicle and the training, which will transition Django from a single-purpose apprehension dog to a dual-purpose apprehension and narcotics detection dog, which will give him a greater field of service here for our city. As you know, substance abuse is a great problem in our city, and with the success that Kai's been having lately, it is making a difference. So again, thank you.
Great. All right. Anybody have any questions for Chief Mensel? No? All right. Good deal, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. If you have any public comment regarding the opportunity for these funds from the Tamaki Foundation and this budget adjustment? All right, close public comment, bring it back to the council then for action on Resolution 2017-43.
Move we adopt Resolution 2017-43, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, California, amending the fiscal year 2017-18 budget of the City of Crescent City.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Mayor Ensor?
Yes. Very good. Come to the end of our agenda. We have any legislative matters that we are aware of that we need to weigh in on this evening? See any? Mr. Young, you've done a fantastic job of sending us a weekly report. Is there anything that you would like to share with us this evening?
A couple, thanks, some of which were here on tonight's agenda. One, Steve mentioned, we, paperwork was signed today to do the fire truck from the rancheria over to the city. It'll be effective Thursday, which will be a very appropriate Thanksgiving gift for the city. But the paperwork was done today and is dated for Thursday, but it's, you know, expressed our appreciation to the rancheria for all that they have extended to the city, and particularly now a new fire vehicle.
Excuse me, Mr. Young, do we have a formal letter of appreciation that we are drafting to send to-
We can. We have not prepared one, but we should.
I would very much like there to be a formal letter of appreciation, and if we can have consent that we do that and send that to the rancheria, I'd like to fix my signature to that. This has obviously been a historic-
Oh, huge.
-partnership, and I think that the council would agree that we need to, once again, tell them thank you for this partnership.
Absolutely.
Would you want that brought back to the next council meeting, or just have one prepared for the mayor's signature and directed out as soon as it we have it done?
I think we have consensus just to prepare it. Yes, please. All right, thank you.
In that light, I would suggest also, considering what the matter just discussed, that something similar be presented to the Tamaki Foundation-
Absolutely.
-and all that they have done for the city presently, but also in the past, some form of resolution possibly, appropriately prepared and framed, or whatever would be.
Well, we do, that's a great idea, Mr. Young. Why don't we do two things? Why don't we go ahead and craft initially a letter of appreciation to be sent on behalf of the council? And then why don't we, why doesn't staff work on a formal resolution proclamation, something that we can present to them and that has a little bit more of a commemorative feel to it?
Home to it.
That I think would be good. Maybe even a plaque or something that we could get done that includes the Canines in it, a picture on it, something that would really be, that they could put in their office to know that we do genuinely appreciate the investment they've made in this community, which is huge. So if staff with the chief, if you guys could work on something like that, that we could get to them, I think that would be fantastic. Okay? All right.
Two other brief items I think I've mentioned. We're starting some of the planning of space needs within the new city hall. I think I've mentioned, I've mentioned to the architect that we should have included in there a separate office for the council members. If you have further desires or needs that you would like to see, please let me know. But I've told them that I know that the council has mentioned before that they would appreciate having someplace that you could meet that would be your space, including possibly desk, computer, so forth, for those occasions which you want to use space at the city hall, not have to scramble to use somebody's office or a conference room or whatever. And that would be included.
Okay.
But if you have any particular needs that you would like to see in that, please let me know.
Okay.
And finally, we're just about, I have talked to the architect today, we're hoping to wrap up the study on the police facility, and I'd hope to have that done before the end of the year. We're taking a look at maybe one of the last buildings or sites that we might consider. And I tossed Mr. Wilkinson today, and again, like I said, hope to have that wrapped up soon. And in that light, I think I've mentioned, you've got to hate it when the mayor's right. We've taken a good look at the PD and some of the maintenance requirements, and clearly need them, but in light of the possibility of a police facility in the near future, I think our best approach is to just do what we need to to keep it going, making some corrections and remodel that accommodate police operations now, relatively minor stuff, but then revisit this possibly next year or so, as we see how we're proceeding on getting funding for our police facility.
All right.
Some of that I've told you before, some of it I haven't, so that's basically it.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, council, do you have anything you'd like to report out this evening? Councilman Follman?
I had a training on the same day as our Transportation Commission meeting, so I was unable to attend that. I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Mr. Greenow?
I had a Dillhart Solid Waste Management Authority meeting on the 14th of this month. And we learned at that meeting that Hambro WSG is going to be opening a recycling buyback center for bottles.
That's good news.
It's a great step forward for our community. It was a big hit, losing Jolindra this, last year, or this year. So that's great, and what an opportunity we have with that, those grants coming in for our fire and police equipment and new Canines. 50% off for gear is not bad.
Meet that.
So I think that's a great opportunity that we have.
All right.
Mr. Short, I'd like to apologize to the people of the city through a mess up on my calendar. I missed the RCT meeting this last week. However, I did vote on a routing change around Safeway. They're not going to be picking up folks on the street for a while. They're going to be pulling back into the Safeway parking lot, pulling right in front of Safeway to pick them up. That's good news for some of the passengers, not, so it's good news for some of the drivers. They really kind of didn't care to go into the parking lot, but hopefully with a future addition of a shelter there on the street, that'll all get itself worked out. Last meeting, we probably should have said something then, but we had a, during public comment period, a man named Anthony Foltman come and talk about his solar project development company and requested that he be put on a future agenda. I got to say that I'd be kind of curious to see what kind of benefits to the city solar items, solar infrastructure would have. So if we could invite him back for a short presentation on some of the things that he thinks would benefit the city, I would appreciate that. I think it's an opportunity we shouldn't ignore.
Okay. I think staff has his contact information, and I think that maybe the appropriate thing to do would be for staff to not only look at one individual, but to look at the concept of solar and be able to explore that, as opposed to just having one person come to present their company, but to investigate that and then maybe reach out to a couple of different companies to, if it seems that that would be an appropriate thing. So Mr. Young, Mr. Weir, if you guys could take a look at that and talk to, well, Anthony or anyone else, there are a couple of other companies locally that have also reached out, so I think that looking-
Let's take a look at it.
And I think that it would be, as far as maybe saving some time and energy, I know that the Harbor has spent many, many hours talking about this issue with a variety of companies. I would certainly encourage staff to reach out to staff at the Harbor so that we're not duplicating efforts. If there's already some lessons to be learned, let's learn them from people who have already learned them and not have to relearn them ourselves. So, but that's a great idea, Mr. Short. Appreciate that input. All right. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. We did have a, I attended the Veterans Day, and then Mr. Short was also there, I think. Greenow was there. We had a good Veterans Day parade. Parade didn't take long, even for those of us who were walking. I think the parade, it took us longer to line up than it did for the parade to actually go through, but it is always an honor to be in that parade and walk with fellow veterans. And the lunch was a great success. I was told that we had over 200 people for lunch that day, and that's great. We had representatives from all branches of our armed forces, and we had representatives all the way from World War II to people who are still serving today. So that is a great, great opportunity to be a part of that, and certainly appreciate all of our veterans and the organizations that help support our veterans.
You know, if I could interject a plug for Marlowe's Restaurant at the lunch there at the Veterans Day event, the price that they charged was astronomically low. They had to have literally given the product away, and they did an outstanding job of feeding that large group of people, so-
They did.
If you think about, go to lunch, think about Marlowe's.
Well, there you go. Okay. And I think that's, I've been out of commission most of this last week, so, but I'll get around as fast as I can. I have to start a lot earlier to get to my meetings, but I'm getting there. Council, I would encourage you to be thinking about appointments for the future, for the boards and commissions that you serve on. You should have a listing of those things and take a look at those if there's any of those items that you currently serve on, that you have struggled to be able to make those meetings and feel like you should be maybe considered to serve someplace else, or you have found that it's something you simply don't, are not interested in or don't want to do, or have other conflicts. If you would please take a look at those, we're anticipating having that appointment list on our next meeting agenda, so if you could weigh in with me on those, I would very much appreciate it. All right? In that case, I think, having no other business, we will stand adjourned until December 4th.